Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen, May 4th, 2020, meeting 7:00 PM. And this meeting is being held remote participation only. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly and hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID number is 1-40886-204, followed by the pound sign. Or they can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams linked through, and you can click on the link in our posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So before we get started, I'd like to roll call my board to see if they're present. Selectmen Kokolas.
Here.
Selectmen Castro.
Present.
Selectmen Metters.
Here.
Selectmen Dinkins.
Here.
Okay. Dean, you may want to turn up your volume just a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. And if anybody is having any difficulty hearing, please let me know. Okay, so we're going to move on to acceptance of the meeting minutes, April 26th, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Madam Chair, Peter, motion to approve.
Peter, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
It sounded like Dean seconded. Do we have any substantive edits or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing that, I'll take a roll call to accept the meeting minutes. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Metters.
Aye.
Dinkins.
Aye.
I wanted your volume, please.
Sign in with you.
I'd like to ask you all that you mute your phones and your videos, and if you'd like, you can also mute your video itself if you want. You can still view us, but your own video. Okay, we're moving on to public announcements and agenda item requests, but I do want to repeat first.
Have you picture?
No, I don't want the picture. I'll put it back.
I'm trying to remind you, I think it's Mr. Levitt. Could you please mute your computer or your phone, whichever one you're on? Thank you. Public announcements and agenda item request policy. Each Board of Selectmen's meeting shall begin with a public announcements and agenda request, following by the approval of meetings if applicable. We did it the other way. The portion of the meeting shall not in its entire exceed 20 minutes. Each recognized speaker during the public announcements and agendas. Item request shall keep his or her remarks to no more than three minutes. General remarks that are considered appropriate for this portion of the meeting are those that do not encourage debate, but rather are more simple announcements, requests, and statements of interest. If a subject, in the opinion of the Chair of the Board or the majority of its members, would be better be addressed as a future agenda item because it warrants public notice and/or debate, then the Chair shall restrict the comments and declare them out of order. Previous actions and/or deliberations of the Board of Selectmen are not appropriate for discussion during public announcements and agenda requests. The Chairman of the Board of Selectmen shall have the discretion on whether to place a citizen taxpayer requested item on the Board's agenda. These limits will be enforced at the discretion of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. And that's just noting that this was a policy enacted in 2005 and updated in 2018. Okay, seeing all that, before we get started for this evening, these virtual meetings are work in progress, and I'm finding that I was having some difficulty personally being able to address the remote participation side of this. I felt that we needed to, I felt I needed to sort of define the protocol a little better. So I just, this is what I've come up with, and I expect that we'll adhere to this for this meeting. Presentations will be made, as usual, each agenda item will be heard, and then we'll hear from the Board for comments and any motions if necessary. But when it comes to the remote participants, I will ask if there are any remote participants who would like to have questions, who will have questions or comments on that agenda item. What I would ask you to do, and please be patient, is to please call out your name politely, and I'll create a list. I will then go down the list to call on you for your questions or comments. You must be called on before you comment or ask a question. Please do not speak before I acknowledge you. When we have gone through the list, I will ask if there is anyone who I have missed and who has not spoken and who would like to, and we'll go through that list. I just want us all to try our best and be courteous in this unusual process, and especially tonight when we are having a large presentation, and there's a lot of people who are either listening in or may want to weigh in on this particular item or have questions for the team that is making the presentation on stepping stones. Okay? All right, so our first order of business is from the Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Robert Dunkinson, and our Town Manager, Jill Goldsmith. It's a COVID-19 update. Dr. Dunkinson, are you available to make, give us your update?
Yeah, good evening, Shereen. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, so just for the education of the Board and the members of the public, a quick update on where we stand with COVID-19. As of earlier this afternoon, there was over 3.5 million cases of COVID-19 worldwide, and unfortunately, over 250,000 deaths worldwide. In the U.S., we had 1.1 million cases, and we were closing in on over 67,000 deaths worldwide, 67,456 to be exact. In Massachusetts, as of this afternoon at 4:00 PM, the state reported a little over 69,000 cases, and unfortunately, over 4,000 deaths in Massachusetts, 4,090. Today's case count went up 1,000 cases in the last 24 hours since yesterday. In Barnstable County, we had 961 cases, which was up slightly from yesterday's case count. The death toll in Barnstable County stayed at 47, so luckily, we had no additional deaths in the last 24 hours from COVID-19 in Barnstable County. There's been a couple of other changes, as most people hopefully already know. Governor Baker on Friday issued an order requiring the wearing of some kind of face covering. It can be a face mask, it can be a bandana, it can be a homemade mask of some sort. That effect, that takes effect as of Wednesday of this week, that if you're outdoors or you're in a store, you would be required to wear a face mask in those circumstances where you cannot maintain the recommended social distancing of six feet or more. It's really required in grocery stores, pharmacies, and retail establishments. In other areas such as your outdoors, you're walking along the street, you're at a park or a beach, as long as you can maintain the recommended social distancing, you are not required to wear a mask, but we're strongly encouraging everyone to do so. And if you're out at the beach or somewhere like that, and you can't maintain the social distancing, you would be required to wear a mask. There is a fine provision in that order of $300. We're hoping that most people will simply abide by the recommendation or the order, and we won't have to get to the point of fining people. It can be done, fining can be done very easily. It's basically like giving you a parking ticket, because it's a noncriminal citation that can be issued by either members of the Board of Health, health staff, or members of the Police Department. And again, that takes effect Wednesday, and so we're hoping that everyone will abide by that as they should. It is not taking the place of social distancing guidelines. Both members of the federal CDC and the Coronavirus Task Force, as well as the state DPH and others, have reiterated time and time again that these requirements to wear masks do not take away the social distancing guidelines. So those will remain in place, and we will see what happens come May 18th, when Governor Baker issues his next set of information as to whether the stay-at-home advisory will continue or be modified, and also what will happen with the essential businesses, whether there will be some relaxation of some of the prohibitions on businesses opening, but they would more than likely be have to open under certain guidelines and criteria, and we're seeing that in similar states as well. And then I just wanted to give you a quick update on some actions taken this afternoon by the Board of Health. The Board of Health reviewed the issue of masks, because that was a hot topic last week when we first set the agenda for the Board of Health, and subsequently on Friday, Governor Baker came out with his order. So the only addition that the Board of Health is going to make to that requirement right now is that establishments such as grocery stores and CVS and retail establishments, once they can reopen, they will have to post signage at the store entrance indicating to folks about the requirement, or reminding folks about the requirement to wear a mask. The Board did vote that this afternoon. We at the staff level, Judy Giorgio, the health agent, is going to be drafting something up. It's consistent with what other towns have done, they've already enacted their own mask orders prior to the Governor's actions, so we do have some standard language that would be more than likely will be following the same kind of thing. So that will happen as soon as we can get that guidance out, and we will distribute that to all the retail establishments, the Chamber of Commerce, posted on the website, et cetera. The Board of Health is going to have another meeting next week. They haven't set a definitive date or time yet. They're waiting to see what happens with the community discussion on Monday, on the 11th, but the Board did discuss and will discuss some further actions on the issue of masks, similar to what some other towns have done, because the Board was very concerned primarily with the Main Street Downtown Business District, they're trying to maintain social distancing on the sidewalks and et cetera, was going to be near to impossible. So as we saw Province Town did, they are requiring the wearing of masks in certain areas of Commercial Street. So the Board had a very brief discussion about what things they might want to look at doing for downtown and potentially other areas in the community that would make wearing masks more of a requirement, you know, in those particular circumstances, but they decided to wait and see what kind of issues and suggestions come out of the community session on Monday before they take any kind of further action. So with that, I think that's all I've got for you for tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Board? And before we, go ahead, any questions from the Board? Peter.
I know, Madam Chair, I'm fine. No, I'm all set, thank you.
Jeff.
Thanks, Shereen, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dunkinson. My apologies, everyone, I zoomed right over the public announcements. So as soon as the Town Manager makes her update, I'll go back to the public announcements. Again, my apologies for skipping over that, even though I had such a prepared statement that I'd made myself. Okay, saying that, Jill, are you prepared to give us an update?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So for town offices, we're at a status quo for critical services through May 18th, 2020, in line with the Governor's last order. We're working on a return-to-work process and safety measures for coworking and to serve the public. Department head meeting tomorrow is going to focus on individual department actions, actions, items, I'm sorry, action items and logistics to where and how we conduct business with social distancing. Last week, I was invited by the Chamber Director to serve on Zoom call with the Chamber Board as well as the Chamber Merchants, and that was on Thursday, and it was really interesting to hear from a group representing members of the business community from all geographic sectors in town, and their concern admittedly and understandably is safe public access and challenges to the businesses logistically to provide for such. Later this week, the Chairman and I have been invited by the Town of Turo to have a call with the local Cape managers and their Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for an initial discussion on cohesive reopening strategy. So working through that, as we called it the elbow up group, and as we know that if there's an event in Province Town, they're going to have to drive through most of our communities to get there, so we really want a coordinated approach to reopening, but no decisions are going to be made. It's basically an update. And then we announced today the Chatham Virtual COVID-19 Community Forum on summer events and next steps, and that's going to be held on Monday, May 11th, at 6:00 PM, and that will take the place of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting. And it's a Zoom format with five questions that have been published that the Board will hopefully hear from the community. It's more of a listening session, and there's not going to be any deliberation, but hear from you, the community members, on what your concerns are and challenges for our summer events and our reopening likely through the fall. And an invitation went to our local legislative delegation as well as our federal delegation, and I think that's it for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions from Jill, from the Board? Corey?
No, I am good, thank you very much.
Peter?
Yeah, same, I'm fine.
Jeff?
I'm great, thank you.
Dean?
I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. That was great. I'm going to move back to the public announcements and agenda item requests now, and realize that's out of order, again, my apologies for that. Do the Board have any agenda item requests or public announcements they'd like to make? Peter?
Yes, Madam Chair. This weekend, I sat through a presentation by the Chatham Climate Action Network. This weekend, I sat through a presentation by the Chatham Climate Action Network, about an hour and a half long. It included all the organizations that we're used to seeing to do with our local, like Friends of Chatham Waterways, our Energy Committee, Friends of Trees, Pleasant Bay Association. And I don't want to say, I'm going to miss someone. But anyway, they did a fine job. And each of those presentations talked about what they're doing, who they are, what they're doing, and what needs to be done. I brought to mind one thing that we, as a Board, have always been, I thought, very cognizant of, and that is, we try to have a balance between all our challenges that we have, which include coastal resiliency, our support for seniors, our three-sixty-five group, and also, you know, our history and conservation. So having said all of that, I'd like to have an agenda item where this group, not an hour and a half presentation, but a slight, a slimmed-down version, provide kind of a background on what they're doing. They came once, but, and an overview of all the groups that are involved. And we may have to do that through the Conservation Agent, I'm not sure. I don't want to put a timeframe on it. But I think it'd be good as we, as we will get out of this over the next few months, hopefully, that they come in so that we balance what they're saying against everything else that we're concerned with, which is unbelievably tough. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Jeff, do you have anything that you'd like to add or have a comment?
Yeah, I don't, thank you, Shereen.
Dean?
I do not.
Corey?
Hi, Madam Chair. No, I mean, the first of the month is traditionally the time where I'm starting to recruit for various boards, committees, commissions. Based on the current situation, I want everyone just to kind of sit tight and know that in due time, I will be starting the recruiting calls again when the time is right and we can get up and going again. So other than that, no, thank you.
Thank you, Corey, we appreciate your effort. Okay, remote participants, are there a list of, is there anybody who would like to, who has an agenda item request or a public announcement to make?
Yes, Fred Crimmens.
Fred, anybody else? Fred, go right ahead.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
My, my understanding is that there will be, this is about the COA, of course. There'll be no motion under sixteen-ten. And the, also, as one of the petitioners, I can tell you that there's no intent or interest in moving ahead with that item. Given that, I would like to see the Board postpone all petition articles and sixteen-ten, along with any others not considered a priority to a later date. Set a date, commit in advance, the putting them on one special town meeting warrant at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Are there any other participants that have agenda item requests or announcements to make? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Our next item is a shellfish closure, seasonal shellfish closure Bucks Creek. Traditionally, it's the Constable Gagny, who, Shellfish Constable Gagny makes that presentation, but she has a late tide tonight. So I believe Dr. Duncanson is going to make that presentation for her.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Robert Duncanson, Director of Health and Natural Resources, again, we're bringing to you the Board one of our seasonal closures. This one specifically Bucks Creek. This is one of those closures that we do every year when we start to get into the warm water temperatures and warm weather periods. Although this year, I'm not sure we're quite there yet, but we do the closure this time every year, and then we reopen it again in the late fall, early winter, when water temperatures are cooling off and bacteria levels drop back down again. This is one of those areas where the cause of the bacterial loading is really natural. It's all the wildlife and waterfowl that are up in Bucks Creek. And so there isn't a whole lot we can do to manage that. So under the state and federal guidelines, we go with a seasonal closure, which keeps the area open when conditions permit and keeps it closed at other times of the year when conditions are such that harvesting shellfish would not be appropriate. So with that, you've got the the actual document in front of you, and I know you need to have the town clerk, the Board of Selectmen clerk, read that off. And so with that, that's all I have to present.
Thank you. Would the clerk read off the rules and regulations and we'll make a motion after?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Shellfish rules and regulations, May four, two thousand and twenty, closed effective May fifteen, two thousand and twenty. The waters and flats of Bucks Creek, north of a line across the mouth of the creek and east of a line across the mouth of Cockle Cove Creek are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Dean. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of this closure, Madam Chair.
Second.
And I believe that was?
Jeff, second.
Jeff, second. Okay, any further discussion on this matter? Any discussion from the remote participants? Hearing none, I'll poll the group. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen Duncan.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Duncanson.
Thank you.
Next order of business is the consider changing Board of Selectmen's regular meeting day to Tuesday at 6:00 PM. I'd brought this up last week in recognition of some changes in some of our work obligations. We agreed to accommodate a change of schedule and the planning, and we asked the planning board if they would change their time for us on Tuesday. And they have agreed to do such beginning June first. So I guess what I'm asking for, if the Board is in agreement for a motion to move the Board's regular meeting to Tuesday at 6:00 PM, beginning June first, two thousand and twenty.
Madam Chair, it's Peter, I move the Board change its regularly scheduled meeting, weekly meeting to Tuesdays at 6:00 PM, beginning June first, two thousand and twenty.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Dean seconded, thank you, Dean. Is there any discussion from the Board at all?
No, Madam Chair, thanks. Thanks to the Board. I was at the Duffy Board meeting, got out at about six-thirty-five tonight, and I got here at exactly seven. So it'd be crazy. So I thank you very much, and I thank the planning board, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I know we had an email from a citizen who I think is on this call about a conflict with the Airport Commission, which moved their meetings to Tuesday. So I think it would be appropriate if we make this change tonight, which I fully support. And the planning board is kind enough to switch back to Mondays. That the Airport Commission, when it gets up and running again in terms of holding meetings, that they might consider returning to Mondays as well to accommodate those individuals who wish to attend both the Airport Commission meetings and the Board of Selectmen meetings. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, it's Peter. The chairman of the Airport Commission is aware. And he has, he sent an email out just mentioning that that they would take it up at their next meeting. Didn't say a date or a time, but they're not going to take it up until they meet again, which I think, as you said, Dean, is appropriate.
Okay, great. Jill, did you, was it you that wanted to chime in?
I just, do you know what he did? And I just wanted to clarify that the planning board's moving to Monday.
Yeah, right, okay. Is there any remote participants that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a roll on a vote to move the Board's regular scheduled meeting to Tuesday at 6:00 PM, beginning June first, two thousand and twenty. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro. Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen Duncan.
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay, great, thank you, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is the twenty-twenty annual town meeting warrant article, COA projects, presentation by the project team. The OPM, Rick Palmeroy, will be hosting the team. And it will be also alternative site at Stepping Stones Road by petition, vote recommendation, sixteen-ten Main Street final cost for inclusion in the annual town meeting. Again, I want to remind everybody that we are going to hear from the public on pertinent questions relevant to the presentation. And we will, and we will be doing this by a list and do it as efficiently and as courteous as we can. Rick, if you want to go ahead with the presentation, and Terry Whalen, sorry, Terry, and introduce the team that's here from the project. I think Coastal's here, and PAR's here, and Joel, well, the architect. Do you want to just introduce everybody, please?
Certainly, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Richard Palmeroy here from Palmeroy Associates. And we're very pleased this evening to provide you with the results of our feasibility study for a stepping stone road. With us this evening, we have our project architect, Joel Bargman from BH Plus A. We have our site engineer, David McKinnonitz from Coastal Associates, Amy Archer from PAR Engineers, and of course, Terry Whalen from the Town of Chatham. I want to first start by saying that I appreciate everyone's indulgence and patience during this process. We started this process just as COVID- nineteen was really hitting the ground. And it's been a difficult endeavor for us to stay engaged on this process. The availability of our team members and everybody involved has been difficult. We've had a very dynamic and productive working group. And their involvement has been essential in this. We've conducted very productive, lively, and constructive working group sessions. The timing of the information wasn't always ideal in the sense that the availability of our team members and the information and sometimes rechecking and going through the information has taken more time than we would have liked. And thus, some of the material that's been provided to the working group hasn't been as timely as we probably would have liked. All that having been said, we have continued to move forward as best as possible and address all of the concerns and opinions voiced during this process. And we feel very comfortable with the information we're providing to you this evening. We had our final working group meeting last Friday. And it was at the completion of, or at that time, we presented our construction estimates and some of our engineering solutions that had been discussed over time. During that meeting, there were a couple of areas that were identified that may need some further research and investigation, namely, in some of the site engineering and in the cost estimating. And the team has spent the last couple of days, you know, researching those and refining the elements. And, you know, there's a couple of comments that we'll make during our presentation this evening that present some positive alternatives or options for some cost-saving measures that were also brought up at the working group session. And it's important that the Board, as well as the public, understand that this process is very fluid. And we have to provide the information that we have available at the time. So we'll go through it, I don't want to belabor the fact. So that having been said, I'd like to, if we could, go right into our presentation. We're going to, our order of discussion this evening will be feasibility study update. The engineering and landscaping solutions. The, we're going to be looking at the various metrics related to the site plan. We also have a presentation by our traffic engineer and parking engineer. We'll be looking at the solution for the stepping stone site with the floor plans integrated into that. And then we'll also be looking at interior perspectives of the space and exterior perspectives of the space. So we have a lot of information to cover this evening, and I will jump right into it. First, you know, the site engineering was completed. We did not do a boundary survey, per se, on this property, but we did verify the existing conditions on site and the topography. As part of this process, we used the information that was available to us from an engineering perspective. And we feel very comfortable with that as a feasibility analysis. The natural heritage and endangered species was not relevant to this site, and that's been confirmed. The geotechnical study had been completed, and all of our results were very, very favorable. And it proved that we had optimal soil conditions and conventional footings could be used for the foundations, and no dewatering would be required other than the standard during excavation. The traffic study and analysis in parking was completed, and we'll be presenting that this evening. The conclusion, when we started this process, we were asked to look at a one-story building on this site. But over time, as we were looking at the site options, it became very obvious to us, as well as the working group, that the best solution for this property was a two-story building of the same size and footprint that we had presented for sixteen-ten. The reason for that was that it minimized the footprint area on site. It allowed us to be more constructive with the parking, allow us more green and open space. And most importantly, it allowed us to get the building located on site and establish all of the grades for parking and entry into the building without incorporating any foundation walls, which was, excuse me, retaining walls, which is a big plus for the project. We also were able to accomplish the drop-off area for companion drop-off and van drop-off. And we have onsite locations for our vans, deliveries, trash enclosures, and outdoor patios in the green areas. So the site plan is quite impressive, and I think you'll enjoy seeing this. The, we had a departmental review that was conducted with the Police Department, Fire Department, and DPW. It was noted that the Fire Department and Police Department would like to see access around the building on at least three sides, and which we were able to accomplish with our site planning. As well as, the Police Department had some reservations and concerns with the access drive across from Heritage. We did not attempt to resolve that from those discussions, but I just wanted to make sure that you're very clear on that. And we're not exactly sure what measures would need to be taken to make that a more comfortable situation. We've looked at a couple, and we can talk about those when we talk about the traffic study. Then we did not conduct a preliminary planning board review at this time. The preliminary conservation review is not necessary because wetlands are not a matter of discussion on this property. We have the cost estimating. They were revised as of today with some of the revisions that were discussed at our working group meeting last week, and we'll present those. And lastly, we have had a request with the Cape Regional Transit Authority, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, to see if there was an option for a stop at that location. And it was determined from the CCRTA that a dedicated stop would not be an option for stepping stones. They noted that there was challenges associated with that. They did come up with several alternatives for specialty stops that could be incorporated in there, but a dedicated stop would not be an option at this time. So that all having been said, why don't we just jump right into the geotechnical report? I don't think people want us to go through all of the numbers, but we've got the results here in the package. And again, it identifies optimal soil conditions, so conventional building foundations can be utilized. And, you know, that's very good. And you see that mostly in Chatham anyways. But it's something that we always want to check to make sure that we don't have to beef up our foundations or any of our parking area. area, you know, supports or buildings labs support. So we have that report in there for you. If there's any questions, we certainly can answer them, but it's pretty cut and dry. And the next slide, we just had some photos of, I believe, the locations of the stepping stone, the rail, the bike trail, and some locations where the borings were. I'd like to jump right into, after that, the site engineering. And we do, I'm going to ask both Joel and David to jump in on this and walk through it. We've laid this out identical to the way that we presented 1610. And we've massaged this site and the layout a number of times, and I think you'll like what you see. So let's just jump right into it.
Hi, this is Joel Bargman. Dave, do you want to start with the site and then follow with the metrics? And then Amy will follow with the parking and traffic.
Sure, happy to jump into this. So the site boundary that we looked at for this, as Rick mentioned, not a boundary survey because this is just part of the larger Montemoy Middle School site. But the essentially lot boundary was bounded by the layout of Stepping Stones Road and the inside of the paved bike path. The area of that is approximately 71,558 square feet. The site is generally pretty well wooded. The topography is such that in Stepping Stones Road, the project site begins on the east opposite of Nob Hill Road, where the elevation of Stepping Stones Road is approximately elevation 54. And going to the west, the west end of the project site ends approximately, well, where the bike trail crosses Stepping Stones Road, and the road elevation there is about elevation 71. Where the driveway enters, would enter onto the property opposite of Heritage Lane, the pavement grade there is about elevation 57. So that's where the driveway would begin. It would come in and make that turn to the right. That driveway would be at a grade of approximately 4%. And that would be the beginning of the parking lot. Vehicles would travel counterclockwise through the parking lot. It's angled parking. And that was arrived at and confirmed through working with the working group. The parking lot itself has a grade of about 2.5% approximately, except for the west end where the handicap parking spaces are and the arrival to the building and drop-off area are. The grade there would be less than 2% to comply with accessibility requirements. The site of the building, the topography, existing topography ranges from about elevation 72 at the southeast corner of the building to about elevation 65 at the northwest corner of the building. The site in that area would be flattened off such that the grade around the building would be about elevation 66.5. And the floor of the building would be just slightly higher than elevation 67, approximately 67.3 would be the floor elevation. That would set the floor of the building approximately three feet below the road grade directly in front of the building. We've shown, we've confirmed that a delivery truck, a box truck, an emergency vehicle can get around this driveway, could come in and make the turn up at the building end. And so now in terms of utilities, there is a sewer manhole directly in front of the building. That's the termination of the existing sanitary sewer. We can connect this building to the municipal sewer system by gravity. We also have available electric. We're showing a transformer in the vicinity of the southwest corner of the building. And gas service as well coming in there. And then water would come into the site on the east side of the building, pretty much across the, where we're showing the drop-off area now, would come in. And the sprinkler and domestic water services would come off of that. We're also showing a hydrant in the green island in the middle, right where that cursor is now. So those are the utilities. This site, the pavement is, and I think maybe Rick is going to touch on this a little bit later, the pavement area is slightly more than the pavement area at 1610 Main Street. That is merely a function of the fact that we're traversing in from a driveway opposite Heritage Lane. This site is not quite as compact or efficient in terms of pavement and parking layout, only as much as at 1610. There's parking on two sides of the building. Where here, it's all on one side. And it's not a large pavement increase here, but it's certainly noticeable. I think at this point, I would say that the drainage systems are roughly similar, very similar, in terms of what's required for stormwater drainage between this site and 1610 Main Street. So that is not a great difference either. Joel, I'd turn it over to you if you're going to continue.
Thank you. This slide is showing similar presentation that we had for the other site, the walking distance from the front door to the parking lot. The furthest point in the parking lot is about, is the back corner is 300 feet from the front door. But it shows that there's a good proportion of sites and of parking spaces in the 125 to 150-foot radius of the front door, which is a concern and a benefit. And it's why Dave is especially concerned about having the lower slope here at the top in front of the building. Excellent. The working group asked that we just present the site a little clearer. Because the blue line is not the property boundary, but it is the edge of the bike path and the road setback at the backside of the sidewalk. And that shows the dimension of 71,558 square feet. And in part of the cost analysis, there's a significant cost for regrading the site, as Dave mentioned, the building's lower relative to the street than the existing site. So the red line is showing the areas that need to be cleared of the site to achieve this project. And you'll see that in the perspective somewhat, the sites, especially on the stepping stone roadside, is cleared. And so our cost estimate incorporates replanting and some trees to replace in that area. Next, please. This is just showing what Dave was talking about, stepping stones. That opening slide that Rick had showed you going up from stepping stones to the building site. When you're done with the grading and the handicap accessibility and drainage, et cetera, the building is actually set down a bit. And you can see in this perspective that it is down about three feet from the road. The other perspective is the next slide. And it was really prepared to show those lines that crisscross across the building. There you go, thank you. Those are the contour lines. And the building sits on the top of the rise as stepping stone goes from east to west. And the point of this is just showing the sidewalk and the parking lot is, again, as Dave mentioned, brought down to about a 2.5% slope. And that's really part of the cause of the site clearing that was shown in that slide with the red line going around it. To make that grade transition and this more gradual step from the driveway entry up to the building requires that. And you'll see in the cost estimate, it incorporates a certain amount of exported soil from this site. Next one. This is just a landscape architecture rendering of the site, the white areas, the building, without showing the roofs. The reason that we did it that way is we were trying to show the, accentuate the area around the outside of the building. Stepping stone has some area at the west end of the building that's labeled lawn, has a nice patio on the front of the building that is in front of the multipurpose room. And it has some garden spaces and other green opportunities on the backside of the property. So this drawing is really intended to show also the new trees that go along stepping stone to fill in where the grading and clearing is required. We were asked to demonstrate if an addition, other than the two additions that we've designed into the building, that would be second floor additions. This particular site has approximately 1,200 square feet on the backside of the building that you could build on without encroaching on the slope of the hill that goes down to the bike trail. So that's a 1,200 square foot footprint. If you did two stories, that would be 2,400 square feet. And last, the working group asked us to take a look at open space on the site that would be surrounding the building, possible for conversion to other uses. So I showed on that previous slide patio areas, lawn areas, it could be memorial areas, seating areas, gardens, or expansion. The yellow lines on the right circle, encircle areas that surround the building that are relatively level and can be used for those kinds of seating, memorials, and other activities. The total of that is 5,735 square feet. The total of green space within the boundary of stepping stone and the bike trail is 29,638. That's additional green space. So you have a total of 35,373 square feet of green space. We were asked to just compare that, and I want to be careful not to be comparing too many issues site to site, but at the 1610 site, we had not done that analysis. So it was deemed that we should compare apples to apples. So we brought this comparison up to speed. The total green space at Main Street is 27,586. Obviously, it's a smaller site, and that includes the total site area, not just the edge of the parking lot, but the site area that goes into the woods at the edge of the parking lot and towards the pond. The open space that's available for memorial, seating, gardens, that accessible outdoor space is 5,375 square feet. And there's about 22,211 square feet of other green space. So it's a smaller site, and I think one of our charts later will sort of show the percentages. But this is a direct response. Terry, do you want to do this, or would you like me to walk through this comparison?
Either way, I think it's just, you know, the general outlines of the various areas. So maybe since I'm talking, I will just, this is Terry Whalen, town of Chatham. And as Joel alluded to, you know, as part of the analysis for the stepping stone site, just put together this table to show the different site areas of, really to represent the total site area, the impervious coverage, so the building coverage, the parking pavement area, hardscape areas, total impervious area, and Joel already mentioned the green area. So what he presented was, you know, a further review of that area of how it could be potentially used as well. And again, while we were doing this, we also added the columns for 1610 Main Street. So to get some sense of the order of magnitude of the impacts between the two different sites, you know, the relative relationships between these kind of high-order uses or developments, or proposed developments of the site, and what those percentages might be.
Great, thank you.
Joel and Terry, I'd like to just add one element to that. We'll get into it later, but I just want to make sure it's clear that everyone understands that there are several constants here. The building coverage is a constant, and the hardscape area is a constant. And then the landscape plan that was shown to you earlier, it showed a good amount of patio area. And there certainly is an option to accomplish that patio area. But in order to keep as many of the costs as comparable to one and the other, we've kept our hardscape areas identical between 1610 and stepping stone. And when I say hardscape, I mean sidewalks, patios, brick-to-pave areas, things like that.
Thank you. All right. Amy is our traffic engineer. You heard her presentation for the Main Street site. So I'll turn it over to Amy to walk you through and also explain what we could and couldn't do, given the current environment. Amy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Joel. Yes, our intent for this site was to do the same depth of investigation and assessment as we had done for the 1610 Main. Unfortunately, with the timing of the addition of this site, we weren't able to get traffic counts at the intersection of Heritage Lane and Stepping Stones Road. So a full level of service analysis couldn't be completed at this time. We would likely have to wait until late summer or fall, even when school's back in session, to get counts there that would allow us to finalize that analysis. However, we can do some comparison back to what was completed for 1610, and I'll get to that as the last component. But for this site, we were able to walk through an assessment for the location with regard to access, circulation, and safety. We did do data collection. There was a speed study conducted along Stepping Stones Road when everything was still up and running. So we got some good data there. We took observations for the site access and site lines in either direction from the proposed driveway, which, as you saw in the previous slides, is proposed to be opposite or Heritage Lane. And then we did a crash data review, looking at the latest three-year period of January 2017, December 2019. There are a couple more months available now, but we wanted to use the same three-year period that we had provided for the 1610 site, just to have a even comparison there. Similar to what we had already completed for the size of this development, we did a parking generation analysis and a trip generation analysis. Both of those are generally based on ITE uses. Recreational, I mean, I'm sorry, senior center is not currently an ITE use. So instead, we used recreational community center, which is the closest use that they do define. So the parking generation numbers I'll go over in a little bit. And I'll point out that the site is currently including the amount of spaces that we think will be needed on a day-to-day basis. And then we have a similar recommendation on how to handle peak days, where you may have a large event that might increase the total number of patrons anticipated at the site at one time. And then finally, we've been working back and forth with the site team on recommendations for the number of parking, the layout, looking at the different vehicle turning movements, access in and around the site. So just to continue, if we can go to the next slide. As was already mentioned, the site is currently showing 55 parking spaces. That was based on our assessment. We did a pretty thorough review of the existing site, spoke with the individuals there, and then looked at how the programming is proposed from existing conditions to And then looked at how the programming is proposed from existing conditions to what's going to be on either the 1610 or the steppingstone site. So looking at the number of overlapping activities, the number of staff that will be provided for those. And the amount of space that accommodates multipurpose type events. So we've come up with a recommendation that the site should accommodate up to 55 spaces for day to day use. And then we do anticipate that those larger events could draw a need for up to 85 spaces. So since the site cannot accommodate the 85, we think for the few times a year that those events would take place. Overflow parking could occur likely at the town office's annex in shuttle services would need to be provided. So that was basically in line with what we had proposed on the other site as well. Since we were at the same maximum parking allotment for day to day use. If we can go to the next slide. So what we found with our review, the crash data showed minimal number of incidents. There were only four over the three year period assessed. Three of those were angle collisions, which are generally low severity at the intersection of Prowl, the east. And one collision was an individual colliding with a fence that was technically beyond the roadway. But at the intersection, so it came up in the review, at the intersection with Old Queen Anne. For anyone that's familiar, that's kind of the five legged, somewhat unique intersection in the bike path cross there as well. So it seems somebody was caught off guard by someone else approaching the intersection and left the roadway to avoid a collision with another car. We found that the speeds along the roadway were decent amount higher than what the posted speed is. We had 38 miles per hour eastbound and 37 miles per hour westbound. So we rounded that up to a design speed of 40. And we looked at sightlines in either direction. As I mentioned, the proposed driveway is there across from Heritage Lane. There is currently even at those higher speeds adequate sightline in each direction for required stopping site distance. We do think that if there were adjustments to the signage along the road or as the bike path is starting to put in RRFBs or the rectangular rapid flash beacons along different crossings. If one were proposed near this site, it could help to lower speeds, which would further improve site distance. But site distance is currently adequate for the required stopping site distance. The site layout as it is, is accommodating adequate parking for the day to day demand that we anticipate. And as I mentioned, we think overflow parking could be handled at the town office's annex or other public sites nearby. As I mentioned, we couldn't do a level of service analysis, but we did look at the trip generation. So based on the size of the proposed building, there is not a high volume that's anticipated from this site during any particular time of the day. We have about 20 vehicles entering and exiting in the morning and 26 in the afternoon. There was some concern from the working group with the proximity of this to the school. If there may be interaction between the two or concern with the two peaks overlapping. We also looked at the timing of operations and the pickup drop off operations for the school. So the school is currently not dropping off on Steppingstones Road. Their primary access is off of Prowl. And based on their hours of operation and the existing hours of operation of the senior center, which are new at their new location, morning peaks would not overlap. The school's drop off activities take place prior to when activities would begin onsite at the senior center. The afternoon peaks will overlap. Obviously, school is getting out in the early afternoon and the senior center is still having activities until 4:00 PM. So the afternoon would overlap, but not the morning. So then my final point is about levels. As we're not able to do an official level of service assessment with the lack of count data. We did do some comparison based on what we had at the 1610 Main site. So for a driveway, if it was just going to come out onto steppingstones, not across Heritage Lane. You would only have the three way intersection of the driveway and steppingstones. And therefore, the fact that steppingstones has lower volumes on a daily basis than Main Street. You would expect an even higher level of service than what we projected. So at Main Street, we had a level of service goes for anyone that missed the previous presentation or doesn't remember. Level of services on a scale of A to F with A to D generally being acceptable. And then E and F being near failing and failing operations where you would be sitting in a significant amount of traffic. You would have an extended delay. Cues would continue to acue in each direction. So we had assessed at the 1610 Main site where there's a much higher volume along the main line than there is on Steppingstones Road. That the main line would have a level of service A at all times of the day. And the driveway was expected to operate at levels of service C, which is still quite good. So if the driveway came out onto Steppingstones Road, not across from Heritage Lane. We would expect an even higher level of service. The counts are needed to figure out how Heritage Lane may interfere. Because the driveway at its current location would form a four way intersection, not a T intersection. We would have the driveway, we would have Heritage Lane, and then we would have the two approaches on Steppingstones Road. So if the site does continue to be assessed, we would try to capture those counts, as I said, near the end of the summer. Or the beginning of fall when school is back in session, just to finalize that analysis. But with the low volumes along Steppingstones Road comparatively, we wouldn't expect there to be any level of service at year F. We wouldn't expect things to be that severe. I think that's everything I had. I don't know if you want to do questions now or if you want to hold everything for the end.
I think it might be easier to get through the presentation and do the questions staggered. The last part of the presentation before the cost summary is just to review the building floor plans and the renderings next here. The floor plans are the same basic floor plan as was used at 1610. As Rick mentioned, we did study the one story option. The two story option, as Rick mentioned, gave additional green space around the building that was considered to be advantageous. And the working group was supportive of the two story building, which further is incorporated into the cost estimate. Steppingstones is on the left side of this drawing, so that's a point. The buildings flipped 180 degrees. It's, it's the same plan, but it's flipped in its orientation from what was shown on steppingstone. The, the entry on steppingstone is, I'm sorry, flipped from what was shown on Main Street. Entry is now on the bottom side of your screen. And it's on the opposite side of the building from the way you saw it. But the interior layout is the same. And so the only point I'm showing this is that in folks looking at the two sites, there's no difference in terms of program offering, building costs. The cost is really focused on the site work related on the two sites. Same for the renderings. We've made an attempt to show in the next slide, this is the building as seen from Steppingstone Road. You know, forgive us, it's always hard to get landscaping exactly the way it would, it would be. But the intent is that there would be new indigenous native species planted in front of the building to fill in areas that had been cleared along steppingstone. It's the same basic building with the main multipurpose room facing out to the street. Next slide. This shows the idea on the bike path. You saw in that cut and clearing drawing that we were able to stay out of the hill area on the backside of the site. And so the native trees and ground cover would, would be retained there for the most part. It does show the approximate 10 foot differential between the building floor plan and the trail. As Dave mentioned, the building is brought down relative to the street. And so that grade differential is a little bit less than it is today on the backside of the site. And the last image is showing you from the parking lot towards the entry. And you can see how the buildings flipped from what it was on Main Road. I think it's nice having the multipurpose room with its sort of larger scale windows facing out to the street. It's nice advertisement. This puts the entry and the lounge in nice locations from the building side. And you can see it still has the same two story addition opportunities on the front and the rear of the building that we had at 1610. And then the next three slides are slides everybody's seen, but it's just for those folks that may be coming in late. It's to just show that again, the inside of the building is estimated to be the same. This is the multipurpose room. The next slide is the lounge. And it's the same as at, at 1610. And the third is a typical program room, showing the flexibility and the inherent simplicity of the design and for how they're estimating. So again, it's just an attempt to show the leveling out of the, of the two projects leading into the cost estimate. And I'll let Rick take it from here.
Thank you, Joel, David and Amy. I appreciate that information very much. So during this process, over the last month and a half. We've taken the information and I think we've done four rounds of estimating during this process. Refinements, revisiting different options and looking at every way possible to obtain a, a good feasibility study estimate. And I stressed that because this is the very first stages of a project development and it's a feasibility study. So it's based upon, basically the estimates are based upon the information that you've just seen. When a contractor bids this project, he will be looking at a set of documents that could be anywhere from, you know, 80 to 90 to 100 pages thick of details and information that represent exactly how to construct and how to install this building. And so that's why I stressed feasibility. We're estimating based upon one dimensional documents. When our documents are complete, they'll be three dimensional and contain a lot more information. So this is, this is kind of where we're at right now with our feasibility estimate. We could just have the next slide. What we've done is we've compared this against what was presented to the, to the town back in March. The first column after the descriptions is the 1610 Main Street cost proposal that was made in March. The next column next to that is Main Street refreshed as of this morning. And the next column is steppingstones as of this morning. The net difference between Main Street today and steppingstones today is about $243,000. That's the bottom line numbers. That's after all contingencies and escalation factors have been applied. So the difference between the two projects is about $243,000. This estimate is based upon an escalation rate of 4% annually. And we have carried that, we've treated this the same way that we treated it back in March. That we, back in March, we assumed that we would be estimating this project in mid to late fall, 2020. And so then we expected to be beginning construction in, you know, late winter, early spring. And then underway. And so we basically carried escalation to midpoint of that schedule or midpoint of that construction schedule. We're not exactly sure when we're going to be cleared to begin this project at this time. So rather than speculating as to what that would be, we carried the same escalation factors. But I can say with, with certainty that we will be adjusting this once we know when the project will be slated for town approval and we can start. The next, the following slides, we're, we've basically broken down the site estimates and tried to identify where the variables were of difference between Main Street and steppingstones. And primarily, they're, they're broken up into several different components. And you know, this is fairly detailed, so I apologize, but it's important that we understand each aspect. And I'm not sure that we want to go through each aspect, but there are a number of factors that increased the site cost of steppingstone just because it's a larger parcel. There's more clearing, there's more grading, there's more parking. Not, not fatal as far as the size difference, but understandable because of the size difference. And there's two large factors that come into this. One, at, at Main Street, we have to install a retaining wall at the back of the site in order to accomplish our workable area. And that cost is included in here in the comparison. And the other large component is the site overburden or grade cutting that needs to take place at steppingstones. Joel and David were describing earlier, the alterations that would be necessary at steppingstones in order to get the building level established and the parking deck established so that the patrons could access the property or the building at a reasonable grade of incline. In order to do that, we've had to lower the building in the site so that someone can walk from the parking area to the building without, without much effort. In doing so, there's something that's called cut and fill. And when grading a property, you're looking at how much you have to move around the property to level it off. So you cut the site and you take the material that you cut and you fill in the low areas to make a balanced or a level site. There are many sites where you have to remove material from the site because you have an overburden. And that's the case with steppingstone, we have an overburden. At Main Street, we looked at that as a level or balanced site. And at steppingstone, we looked at that as an overburden site. So that cost is a, is a big component of the difference between the two numbers. And we have discussed that at length with the working group. And we've looked at it from several different directions from the engineering and estimating perspective. It is in fact, we, after doing the estimates, we engaged coastal engineering to do a full engineering analysis on that to confirm what we were seeing as far as the overburden. So we feel very comfortable with the numbers. But what was made, mentioned that our working group meeting, which is totally viable in some circumstances, is that there, we have considered the cost of the equipment to cut the material, to load the material, to haul the material and dispose of the material. And that's our obligation to do that because we don't know if the town has, maybe they have an opportunity where a local business person or a property owner or the town itself could accept the material where we wouldn't have to be paying for that, that burden. There may be options where a site contractor would be willing to perform that work and save some money. But we can't bank on that at this point. I just need you to understand that it could be an opportunity down the road. We just don't know if that's, if it's available to you or not. Another aspect that we've seen in these comparisons is that because we have a greater area at steppingstone and we have more disturbance, we're going to be replacing that with lawn, natural habitat and landscaping material. And there's a cost associated with that and that's all worked into the figures. However, there is also with, with, with every situation like that, it presents an opportunity. There could be the opportunity where we have donations. Families want to donate a tree in the memory of, or a park bench in the memory of. And this could be hold true for either site. But at steppingstone, there is a need for more plantings and lawn areas. So you know, there may be an opportunity to reduce the difference between the two sites by donations. Again, that's not something that we can bank on now, but it's something that could be explored. And it certainly is an option to see the cost between these two projects get closer to. get closer together. I'm not sure if it, if we want to go through each one of the line items, but a lot of them have to do with property size and what is necessary at one property only because it's greater. And then we do have, in this chart, we have the red costs, which are, you know, higher. Basically, the way we did the comparison was Stepping Stone versus 1610. So a red number represents a higher cost than 1610. And then the blue represents a higher cost, a lower cost based upon what would be impacting us at Main Street. So as you can see, the big blue numbers there are the retaining wall and the railings on the blue. And there's a couple of other areas where Main Street is a little bit more expensive. But primarily, it was Stepping Stone that had marginally higher costs. Another aspect on the tail end of this summary is the project utilities. We have some areas in the project utilities where we're benefiting at Main Street. The sewer connection and the water connections would be completed as far as the Mass Dot project and stubbed onto the property. So that's not something that we have to incorporate into this budget. We also have our utility lengths that are a little bit shorter at Main Street than they would be at Stepping Stone. And we've looked at the stormwater detention. You know, there were, we've, it's not fully designed, as I said before. It's schematically or feasibility study design. And the, between the engineering and the estimating, we've gone back and forth as to what would be appropriate for both properties. And as of our Friday meeting, we went back and revisited some of the systems with coastal engineering as well as the engineers. And there's been some adjustments that have been made that have brought the properties, the two systems down to a comparable size. One is marginally more expensive than the other. So again, the, what we've been doing over the last three weeks of estimates is looking at each estimate and making sure that we're comparing apples to apples as best as possible and trying to provide as accurate information as possible based upon the level of documents that we have today. I do have to say that during this process, we did recognize some cost savings on Main Street that reduced, that brought down the Main Street number that was presented in March to today. So we felt it was very important that we identify that and bring that forward because it's only good practice. So that's kind of how things fall out as far as estimates. Just to give you a quick idea, the difference between the construction numbers, as you see in this spreadsheet, the estimates is about $165,000, $166,000. But then when you start asking, acting, applying, excuse me, your markups and your profit and overhead to those numbers, and then escalation, the number grows. So basically, what you're seeing in this sheet is bare numbers. And then we take from them, from that, we add our markups and so on and so forth, and then apply our escalation and add it into our development budget. So that's kind of how we got to where we're at today. I think we could probably open it up for questions if it's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Hold on. Yeah. Thank you very much, Rick. And thank you for your team in putting this presentation together and walking us through it with a better understanding of the work that the working group did to get to where they are and the comparisons that we see between 1610 and this project being somewhat similar. What I'd like to do right now is turn to the selectmen members of the working group for some feedback in, on their experiences and comments and let them know that, appreciate their work that they did on this. It couldn't have been easy for anybody to walk through projects like this on a remote level. It seems we're getting a bit very fair understanding of the project, but it's, I think it'd be very good to hear from, Peter, would you like to go first? If that is okay with you?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to initially just talk about the process. I was on the Middle Road one. I think I've mentioned that before. So was Stephen Daniels and Barbara Siegel. I hope I didn't forget someone else. But in that, this whole process this year and last, but especially this year, I do want to commend that Rick and the whole team. We asked some pretty tough questions. Sometimes we didn't always agree on certain things. I think we tried to keep it at a level. We've all dealt with Rick and Joel before, obviously. And I have the highest respect for what they do and what they've done. I think they try very, very hard to be an honest broker for us. And this whole process was an honest broker. And people were relatively candid. I won't go through, I'm not going to ask any questions. I sat through a whole bunch of these. I just wanted that process, the process to be out there so that people understand this was very well done. And there was very, some difficult questions asked. And I think that this team did a great job. You know, somebody, I know that people ask me, look at the difference in cost from the time of Middle Road. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. And it's not unusual. We've seen it happen on other things. But this is, this is what it is. And I think it's the best estimates that they could come up with. There are caveats to them, and I understand that. Later on, I may have some other comments about, you know, the site or whatever. But I just want to say, I want to say thank you to them. They did an excellent job.
Thank you, Peter. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. I do want to echo Slavik Kukulas's comments to the team. They're very professional. Their efforts, their integrity, everything under these COVID-19 scenarios has been wonderfully done. I appreciate the time and effort of the working team, the working group, and all members that have contributed to this process. So I'm very happy that we've gotten this far. It is no short task to process all this information. And I do need to kind of put myself out there a little bit because, you know, I've kind of tried to keep an open mind on this process, being part of the working group. There's a different opinion about the Stepping Stone site. And my feelings are completely separate from the 1610 option. I will be very blunt in saying I'm not as enamored on the Stepping Stone site as, you know, some may be others of my working group. My concerns still exist with the way that it's going to hit the streetscape in our primary residential area. The amount of clearing that it appears that would happen, it would, that would be, if this were to move forward at this site, it would be the second municipal project with significant clearing on that street, you know, the first being the cemetery expansion. So that kind of bothers me a bit. The conversation surrounding the Montomai Regional Middle School, and were we going to incorporate this facility as part of their campus? Or how would all that fit in? And it's clear that we're isolating this completely from that facility. We're carving it out. It's physically separated with a bike trail. So it's really, in my mind, not fitting in in a manner that I'm overly excited about. It will fit. It's a larger parcel. Thus, the costs, you know, numbers that are showing out there. The, you know, the forecasted figures for some of this work, I mean, they're being done on a professional basis. We all know any type of delays are going to impact any kind of site. We also know that the current market is so unknown. We don't know if, you know, if the future is going to have more beneficial bidding environments, or if it's going to work against us. We do not know that. And that's going to apply for any site out there. It appears that neither site is going to offer much cost savings. You know, they've been compared apples to apples as best as possible. And, you know, we're, you can finesse different categories here and there. But I don't think either one is going to offer a significant cost savings in the construction and design area. Let's see what else. I would like to, at some point, maybe Terry Whalen could expand a little bit. Rick touched on this. On Friday, the report was given about the department heads, our fire department, police department, DPW, and different concerns were raised. And I want to be very delicate of, you know, of some of the topics that were raised. But, you know, we, there was concern about the driveway. But there was also concern about emergency and tactical or, you know, whatever necessities that are preferences by our chiefs if certain situations were needed to address the facility at Stepping Stone. So I would really like the department heads' comments to be clarified so that I'm not misinterpreting them and the public is clear of where their position is. Because what I took out of the working group meeting and the information that was provided really got me thinking about, you know, certain components of reviewing this option. So with that, I'm going to kind of hold off on future comments. You know, I think everyone has the right to their own opinion. I know people are going to be very excited about the Stepping Stone option. I think those may not be. I am, like I mentioned before, I am not as enamored of this site as I thought I could be. And this is, you know, separate from my feelings on 1610 Main Street. But I've tried to keep an open mind on this, but I still have great concerns over what this could be. But for right now, I'm going to hold my comments. So thank you.
Thank you, Corey. You were a bit evasive about what you wanted Terry to speak to about the department heads. Is it, well, no, I'm just asking Terry if you, unless you want to speak to it. But is, Terry, are the department heads going to make any official, or is there a matter of meeting minutes or something where we can get a better understanding of what their concerns were?
Yeah. So again, this is Terry. So as I reported at the working group, again, we had a conference call, again, as we're doing most things nowadays with COVID-19, actually all our business. And we looked at, we had the site plan in front of us while we were talking. And the points that were highlighted in the bullets really indicate some of the items with, you know, the maintaining, obviously, we're at a schematic phase. So we're not at a, you know, a design development phase. So just things to keep into consideration regarding access to the building from multiple sides for both, you know, police responses and fire responses, you know, would be a consideration. But I think what, as Joel showed in that usable area analysis, you know, as far as circulation around the building, there, you know, there might be some different ways to, you know, achieve that maybe a little bit better to meet those needs. And obviously, you know, the inability to finish the, or complete, do the complete level of service analysis regarding, you know, the functioning at the driveway is something that is still, you know, not 100% resolved. So that's really the general nature of those is that, you know, as we move along, those just need to be high considerations for finalizing any kind of plan.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Terry. Did you want to add anything else, Corey, before you're done?
No, I am good.
Okay. Thank you, Corey and Peter. Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to weigh in on at this time?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, again, echo my fellow selectmen. Excellent report by Rick and Joel and the rest of their group. And also want to thank the members of the working group that have spent an extraordinary amount of time analyzing this site. And in comparison to 1610, that was the charge. It certainly looks as though we've gotten our $75,000 of money's worth here in this analysis. And I think they did an excellent, did an excellent report. It's no surprise, I guess, when you think about the size of Stepping Stones, that in fact, the site work is going to be more ultimately. But what I was struck by and with is that the costs really are, the costs are kind of a, kind of a wash between, between both. So if you put even costs aside, I think rather than going to quantitative factors, we kind of should go to qualitative factors, facts. And in my, in my, in my opinion, and this is an opinion, that I'm trying to kind of scratch my head about, why would we raise woodlands and, you know, an area that's natural, raise it, put a big building on it, when we have a site that's already raised that was donated? Never mind the noise with the schools, et cetera. And I think Selkman Matters brings up a great point, that the building in that area, in my mind, when I looked at, and it's a gorgeous building, no matter, it's just a really well-designed building. I mean, it's gorgeous. But on that site, it just seems like it's out of place in a residential area. So that's my, that's my, that's my opinion. My other concern are, and Corey also echoed this, is that you got to have police and fire comfortable with their accessing that building, especially with elderly inside that building and around it. So that's, that's a given. So we got to figure that out if in fact, Stepping Stones becomes the site. The other thing that gets me going a little bit is the confluence of a whole bunch of exits and entrances in that one little area on Stepping Stones. Council on Aging now, I should have go there. Got a parking lot that's used by parents and kids. Got a heritage dump in there. You got a bike trail dump in there. You got four different accesses and egresses, if you will, all in one little area, which I think is probably not optimal. The, you know, the petitioner is espoused, at least early on, that, you know, that it would be a one-story. And I understand why it isn't. And I think that's a very good decision that it isn't because, number one, it wasn't going to fit. But the original arguments for why Stepping Stones, especially the cost savings, now no longer holds sway. So I think, I think folks have to think long and hard about, is this really where we want our Council on Aging to land? And given that we're putting costs as a consideration in design and functionality as a consideration aside. The other point I want to make is I'm not comfortable with the size of the parking lot and the distance that seniors will have to walk into the building in potentially inclement weather. You know, 300 plus feet away, I know that's not too many spaces, but even 250 feet away, I think that's a long stretch. I think it's a long walk. So those are my initial thoughts. I know the site work is more. I get it. You know, I think for, if the, if the site really screamed at us, you know, we would even recommend it at $284,000, $283,000 more than 1610. But it doesn't for me. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. When it comes to the quality side of the site, I certainly go back to exactly what I said before. And I am too, you know, it was presented as a one-story concept idea. It would work, it would fit and all. And the group was asked to look at it as a second two-story building. One of the things that really, really troubles me is looking at a two-story building, that it just changes that neighborhood to not be a neighborhood anymore. And, you know, we've seen, so it comes down to, for, one argument is, do we want to change a neighborhood? Or do we want to enhance a village center? And if the costs are the same, the building's the same, that, to me, speaks more to the viability of enhancement to the area, to have something that sets in a more center where there's transit and people can go shop and they're not, it's not in a setting like this. I'm I'm, you know, we still have concerns. We know that the school committee hasn't voted, did not vote to surplus the property. Those are things that would have to be talked about again. I would never be, I don't think I'd be in favor of moving that towards school committee. They definitely voiced their opinion on how they felt about it. They want to keep the property for the future of Chatham's children. But saying all that, I'm not dismissing Dean. I know you're next. So love to hear from you. And then we'll turn it out to the public. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point out, it was presented as being less expensive. It was presented as being a one-story building. It was presented as having a less complicated topography. And I think we've seen in terms of the requirements to make this two-story building fit, that those didn't pan out on the analysis. I have a question first for Rick, and then I have some comments to make. Rick, on Friday, in the material that was presented with the selectmen's pass package, 1610 Main Street, the bottom line came out as $8,017,000, $17,295. But your numbers today bumped that up about $183,000. Can I ask you to explain, you know, what happened there? What was the basis of that increase?
Yes, I am on, okay. So when we were looking, one of the big discussions at the working group session was the disparity between the numbers for stormwater drainage between the two parcels. And we had asked coastal engineering to go back and revisit their engineer, their engineering and the cost estimate. And quite frankly, it was determined that the cost estimator had lowballed and not carried a couple of components correctly on the Main Street site. So in that revisit of all of the systems, the stepping stone site went up about $8,000 after the work today, as well as the Main Street site went up $125,000. So that's the bottom line. That's what took place there.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do want to commend those who worked on this, the project team, the town staff and the working group members who took the time to address this issue. I'm going to take, express some agreement with what's been said by Shereen and Jeff and others. But I'm going to differ with something Jeff said. I don't think almost a quarter of a million dollar increase in Steppingstone's Road over 1610 Main Street is a wash. That's a significant piece of change. And when you add that to the $75,000, almost all of which has been spent that was dedicated to this project, this analysis, and the $6,000 that we spent for the town meeting in March, I think that's a considerable expenditure of taxpayer funds. And I would point out that that $75,000 is tapping into free cash category, which, as we've seen in the current crisis, obviously, it wasn't foreseen back in March, is a critical component for trying to stabilize the town tax rate. I want to ask just two rhetorical questions. Why would we want to clear this parcel on Steppingstone's Road to place a two-story building when we have a parcel of land that's free to us on Main Street that is likely to be developed whether a COA goes on there or not? I see nothing, nothing, in this analysis to commend Steppingstone's Road as a suitable alternative to 1610 Main Street. From the outset, I called this Steppingstone's Road process a sideshow. I stand by that comment. It was an unhelpful diversion from the main chance of getting a senior center at 1610 Main Street. I also said that the feasibility study for Steppingstone's Road would be a waste of money. I think I've been proven right. The town staff and the Board of Selectmen did not think Steppingstone's Road was worth serious consideration for a senior center. And I think we were proven right. The Council on Aging Board rejected the idea of placing a senior center on Steppingstone's Road in terms of feasibility study. And I think they were proven right. The school committee rejected the idea of giving up this land. And I think they were proven right. This feasibility study, which garnered more than 100 fewer votes, 297 votes versus 409 at the January 4th town meeting for the feasibility study for 1610 Main Street, is a significant hit financially to the town. What did it show? We showed that there are major site problems. We have a two-story building instead of a one-story building. We have a number of seniors having to walk uphill 200 feet, 250 feet, 300 feet, just to get to the building from their parking spaces. We have massive destruction of trees. And all this had almost a quarter of a million dollars more than Main Street. I think it's a fiscal flop. I don't think this proposal should have ever seen the light of day, nor will it likely survive to actual fruition. Because three things need to happen, apart from any two-thirds vote that might be garnered at town meeting, should that ever recur. First, as Town Council has pointed out in an opinion that was included in the packet and which he reconfirmed yesterday, the Board of Selectmen would need to vote to determine this property is no longer needed for school purposes. Because the original acquisition of the property was by eminent domain in an order of taking that said the acquisition was for school purposes. It did not say or any other municipal purpose. I don't think that's likely to happen. I can't predict what my fellow board members would say, but I'm certainly not going to vote to make that determination. Second, the school committee would need to vote to declare the property surplus. And we've already seen that they have determined that they don't want to declare this property surplus. And thirdly, the Board of Selectmen, by a two-thirds vote, would need to place on a ballot for election of the voters an authorization for exclusion from Proposition 2.5. Again, I don't see this Board of Selectmen taking that vote. I'm certainly never going to vote in that direction. None of these things is likely to occur. I really do think that Steppingstone's Road is not going to happen. I think it's a dead issue, and I think it is time to move on. Thank you, Madam Chair. I may offer a motion later after we've heard from the public.
Okay, thank you, Dean. All right, so any, I'm going to ask for people to speak up if they would like to have the opportunity to ask questions to the project managers on this site. And so anybody from remotely participating would like to speak, say so now, please.
Yes, Elaine Gibbs.
Okay, anybody else?
Frank Messina.
Frank, anybody else?
Rick Levitt.
Rick, anybody else? Nobody else wants to speak up about the site? Okay. Elaine, if you'd like to speak?
Yes, I had some very-
Fred Clemens was trying to add in there.
Okay, Fred, I got you.
I have some questions on the map with the blue and the red boundary lines. I'm not sure it's material at this point, except that I guess I'm not sure what that setback is between the sidewalk and the blue line and how deep that is. That looks like it's about 5,000 or 6,000 square feet that's not being counted in the square footage of the lot.
Rick, do you?
I was going to ask if David is still on, if he may be able to address that. If Terry, you can pull up that slide. Please.
Yeah, what I'm talking about there is that you can see that the blue line is the 71,000 square feet, and that's the boundary area. But it's setback from the red line. So in between the blue and red line on Steppingstone's, I was wondering what that space is. Is that the easement?
This is Terry. This is, that's a differentiation. So the blue line is the property boundary and the, basically, as noted there, the back of the sidewalk. So basically, that is, that, this area that I'm highlighting between the blue and the red is within the town's roadway layout.
All right, but normally, in town, on any piece of property, like in the town layout, the easements are taxable. They're part of the assessed value. They're included in the square footage, even though you do have an easement to do utility work. So I'm not sure why that 5,000 or 6,000 wasn't included in it like it's done with every other town road.
Again, this is not an easement. This is the property line. It's the barrier. It's the boundary between the town layout and the property that has the middle school on it to the north. I can't speak to, I'm not aware of taxation of people. And again, there's not, the town easement isn't, there's no easement in this location. It's just the property, the boundary between the property and the town layout. That's what that indicates.
But it's on the other side. It's on the north side of the sidewalk. Which doesn't make, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that's never going to be used. That would be maintained because it's being cleared. It will be part of this property and it will be maintained as part of the property. It's being cleared. I'm just saying, I kind of disagree with the 71,000. It's kind of a moot point here. Three of us had felt that the ones, we should have had a price on the one-story because I think there was room for it there. But, and I also wanted to point out that the parking, part of the reason why the parking takes up more space is because it is angled parking. It is more conducive and easier for the demographic. It does require more square footage. I also wanted to mention, that hadn't been mentioned before, is the Chatham Police Department did provide figures for the accident report in this area versus the existing Council on Aging. And there were no traffic accidents. There were no speeding tickets issued to anyone at all. Never mind people who happen to frequent the Council on Aging. I would disagree with Dean. My feeling is that this is a far superior location for our seniors. I think the quality of life for them would be far superior. I think we should be getting away from the idea that it's a Council on Aging, but more that it is an active living center. Because people, I think COAs to a certain degree are going to be a fad. People are living longer. They're more active. And if we want this facility to be used, we need to have it be more attractive to younger people. And I think this place would be because of the bike trail and the more green space. I think it's safer. I think it can be multi, it's a multipurpose building and that the parking could be used for overflow parking for town meetings. It also could be used after school on weekends for the school athletic programs. It could even be used in the summer for parking for downtown with shuttle service. I think to spend $8 million on a building in a commercial district next to an airport and to say that it's going to enhance the village center when it's a municipal building is only open 8:00 to 4:00 during the week and closed on weekends, I think it is an unfortunate waste of a piece of property that could be better utilized for something that would bring either housing to that area or more stores. So I would disagree. I think that $8 million in that area on 1610, I don't think we'd get our money back if we find out that people do not use it in the summer because of the traffic backups, because of the roundabouts. I think the one on Steppingstone's would be utilized year-round and certainly in the summer, more so than 1610. Those are my thoughts. I think the voters are going to decide. If they're going to decide if $8 million is too much on either site or if $8 million is better spent on one over the other. And so we can debate all we want, how we think it's going to turn out. But I think the voters will decide that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, next is Frank Messina.
Thank you, Shereen. I think I want to associate myself mostly with the comments by Councilman Dean DeCastro. First of all, I think Mr. Palmeroy and his group did a phenomenal job. And 40 years of business, sitting through many presentations on construction and manufacturing projects, it looks like they dotted every i and crossed every t, even though these cost estimates are based on a schematic and conceptual. I can't see anything that was left out. I had the opportunity to review some of this stuff yesterday and today because the package was made available online to the town. So I think this is a dead issue at this particular point. I believe the people who probably signed this petition, you know, 500 folks, a lot of friends of mine. And if you look at the talking points that I think it was Mrs. Gibbs or other people put forward of why people should sign this petition, it's almost every one of the things they put forward of why they should sign this petition and allow us to spend $75,000 of taxpayers' money, you know, to go forward, even after the school board said no. And now with the decision, which is in the package on our town council, I think it's time to move on. We've got enough things diverting and separating the community. And I think we've got to be very careful and hopefully in the fall, move forward with the Council on Aging in the town center on, in West Chatham. I think some of the issues that were brought up, the issue of not having a building of a fire department to be around the side, three sides of the building, the access on Heritage Lane. I'm a biker. I come down that bike path, okay? And it's pretty dangerous. You have to cross that, you have to cross stepping stones twice. And now we're going to add a lot of traffic coming in for the Council on Aging. I think that's not a positive thing, you know, for the bikers. The fact that you're going to have to clear how many acres of property and cut down all those trees and move a massive amount of earth to level it, but still not being able to level it sufficiently because of the slope of stepping stone is crazy. The walking distance of 250 to 350 feet to the, excuse me, 250 to 300 feet, I mean, that's a no-brainer that we shouldn't be doing that. And lastly, from my perspective, that neighborhood, which is a small residential area, which was disturbed significantly when the town expanded the cemetery. And now we're going to do this massive amount of earth moving to stick in, you know, a commercial building. And guess what? You know, the Council on Aging is a commercial town building. And I just think it's just the wrong thing to do. And I appreciate, you know, everything that you guys are doing. And hopefully, we can put this aside and move forward in a near-term town meeting to get the senior citizens what they're looking for, which is a beautiful facility in the town center in West Chatham. Thank you.
Okay, next is Rick Levitt.
Thank you. If the zoning, I'm going to side with Frank just now and with Dean and Jeff's comments. For example, if the zoning board were to have to take a look at this project, which they won't have to, several of the criteria they use in evaluating a project, one of them is, is the impact on the neighborhood visual character detrimental to the neighborhood? And I think in this case, it certainly would be. Another criteria they look at is the impact on the natural environment detrimental to the neighborhood. And it certainly would be having to clear the entire site in order to fit the large parking lot and the building in there. I'm not going to comment on petitioner's claims made here tonight. When soliciting signatures for their petition a few months ago, they claimed a senior center on school land would cost less to build than in West Chatham. They told petition signers that it would cost $5.3 million, far below the $8 million-plus estimated today. Actually, as has been pointed out here several times, this building, building a senior center on the lot on Steppingstone's Road will be far more expensive, considerably more expensive than building in West Chatham. Petitioners asked for a feasibility study. They have had a fair shake at making their case. case. The town acted in good faith. It's time now for all of us, in my opinion, to come together and support putting the senior center in West Chatham Village. That ideal site was approved by voters earlier. It has many advantages for seniors and will serve important needs at Chatham's, of Chatham's wider community. Thank you, Shereen.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Crimmins, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess I would like to say that I am diametrically opposed to the comments by Mr. DeCastro. I believe this remains a very viable site. I believe this is a higher quality location for the people themselves as a quality location to be able to sit outside, to be able to walk in the area, to, to maintain their active lives, maintain an active lifestyle. So I think that's really what it's going to boil down to. There'll be qualitative issues. And on top of that, I believe it's a much safer site, particularly given the recommendations from, from the traffic study in terms of mitigating any sort of possible issues around crosswalks or students using the crosswalks or using that parking lot. I think that's all been addressed in the traffic study detail. I think the comments about the distance from, the distance from, in the parking lot, and maybe Rick can comment on this. I thought what I understood from the working group, and I was a participant in it, was that nearly all of the parking was within 200 or 250 feet. I don't know where the 300 feet comes from at this point. And at, at the end of the day, the citizens are going to decide whether they want their council on aging in a rural pastoral quiet setting where they can walk and use outdoor facilities or in an urban setting that's extremely noisy, that has traffic problems most of the year. So I think it'll, it'll boil down to that. And I have faith in the citizens of the town that they will make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crimmins. I'm just going to put it out again to see if anybody else would like to speak from the remote participants.
I had a question for Rick.
Oh, you did? I'm so sorry. Rick, are you still there? Mr. Crimmins had a question.
Yes, I am. Terry, I'm not sure which one it is actually. Terry, would you mind going to that slide with the, thank you. I'm not sure exactly where the confusion is, Fred. This information has been provided in the last two working group sessions, maybe three. And we've massaged the parking and the layout of the site to get all of the spaces as close as possible. The majority of the spaces are within 250 feet. And more than 50% are within 200 feet. So, and I don't know how to answer the question because this has been a topic of discussion for many meetings and the information really hasn't changed.
Yeah, you, you just, you just answered the question, Rick. There were representations that it was 250 and 300 feet for a lot of the spaces and that, that's not the case.
Right, exactly. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other remote participants would like to ask questions or have comments?
Shereen, it's David Whitcomb. Can you hear me?
Yes, David. Hold on just a second. I just want to find out if there's anybody else that would like to speak after David. Okay, go ahead, David.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna, there's too many, there's still too much misinformation out there. I mean, as far as green space goes, I, and I wasn't able to stay on the whole meeting, but there's the, the Captain Harding Park next to the 1610 Main Street, which is 1.82 acres that has land that the town paid $650,000 for that can be used. But, and as far as the, all the spaces at 1610 are within 125 feet and some are only 85 feet. But I'm not going to go down all that. I'm going to take a bigger step if I could. The petition article, the last sentence in the petition motion was to authorize the Board of Selectmen to review this site and to expeditiously take any other action in regard thereto. And I think this Board of Selectmen have the power to take stepping stones off the table. And I think they ought to do that tonight. I think it's time to join together and discuss the financing and the timing of building a new COA construct with construction costs, savings with a shovel-ready project, or there's a lot that can be, that's where we ought to be putting our energies now. So I hope the Board of Selectmen will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other remote participants would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Herb Bassett.
Hi, Herb. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the powers that be for allowing me to serve on this group. I've really enjoyed it, lively at times, but still a very good thing to go through. I'd also like to thank Rick and all of his crew. I think they've done a wonderful job. We might look back at this as really having made a good business decision just simply looking at Stepping Stones Road. I can't really say it was a waste of money. I think people needed and deserve the answers. And we now have the answers. Previous speakers have spoken about the bike path on Stepping Stones. Well, we have a bike path on 1610 as well. Now, as a previous speaker also mentioned, we do have the conservation land next door to use. And I think that's an important thing. One of the things that came up in the working group was how much open space. In other words, could we or should we consider the conservation portion of that property as green space? And I think we should. We don't have to tear stuff up and build on it to just enjoy it. I think we can enjoy the conservation space for what it is. And I think it's an important part of that particular piece of land on 1610. And I think a lot of people will just enjoy abutting it. So just because we're not going to be physically changing it, altering it to use it, doesn't mean it's still not an important thing. Yes, we now know that it's going to cost a little bit more money to build on stepping stones. But I think it's good that we know that. And again, I think that's one of the things that makes us look back and think maybe it was a good business decision. Overall, I think 1610 is better for a simple reason that 1610 has two drop-off points. Okay? Stepping Stones has one wide drop-off point. And if we get to the part of the building where we're going to have elder care, we are going to be bringing buses in, we're going to be unloading people. I've worked in this trade. It can take easily five minutes to unload one person from one of these buses. So I think the separate drop-off point that we have on 1610 and do not have on Stepping Stones is a real important point. I think that might be about all I've got written down. But again, I, I thank you for the opportunity to serve on the committee. I've enjoyed working on it. And again, enjoyed meeting everyone and working with them. Thank you very much. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Herb. Okay. Any other remote participants would like to weigh in at this time? Hearing none. I'll bring it back to the board and for...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Dean. I have a question for Rick because I'm a little confused about, in, in response to a question that Mr. Crimmins asked about the parking spaces, because I'm looking at that plan. And it shows, as I read the plan, several parking spaces, I didn't count them up, but there are a number of them, that are 200 feet, 250 feet, 300, 300 feet away from the, the door to the building. Is that, is that correct or not correct, Rick?
That is correct. If I, if I didn't make myself clear, I would say that the majority of the spaces are within 200 feet and that there are probably 12 spaces, if not 15 spaces within 250 feet. And then another one, two, another seven or eight that are within 300 feet.
And on 1610, all the spaces are within 125 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Peter.
Yes, Peter, go ahead.
When I first spoke, I said I'd, I'd had, had a couple of comments towards the end as we get through the final of this. Let me say that, you know, I have, I have supported 1610. I've always supported the fact that 1610 is, is, I think is in a proper location. I'll talk to that a little bit. But, but the point with Stepping Stone is, is as other people have said, it's, it's inappropriate for the area. It is poor municipal planning, period. Maybe we're getting jaded because we get approvals for zoning where we put big houses on small properties and we're getting used to doing that. But that's no reason for the town to do that. How many people complain and send us letters all the time about how the character of Chatham is changing? And you put a building like this up at 10,000 square feet, sitting sideways across in a residential neighborhood on a two-lane road without, without any kind of, of shoulders. Yeah, it's in a rural area and it's inappropriate for that area. I want to just address the one-story comment about trying to get a, a price. We all agreed at the work, at the working group that we weren't going to spend more money on, on, on looking at a one-story cost estimate when we knew it was going to have to have retaining walls. We knew that the green space was going to be a greater, and we knew that, that it was probably going to be even more expensive. So I just want to put that aside. Besides, I, there's this quality of life in young seniors and they're going to do more at, at Stepping Stone in an idyllic area. First of all, let me look at 1610. You drive into 1610, you take a slow way down and then you're isolated from all the noise behind you. You have conservation land, as people have said before, on the right of us. You walk out of the building, you don't go more than 25 or 30 feet, and I may be exaggerating, and you're on a walking path into the park, park-like area right next door to us, which already have wa, walking areas. The quality of life for younger seniors, and when I was a younger senior and you're younger seniors now, the things that we're talking about being by the, the, the bike path, the tennis courts that are out there, all that is not a form, a, a, a core program within the Council on Aging. Why? Because we have a community center that's been doing this. And we're not building the community center, Council on Aging, to be another community center. And at the same time, like a previous speaker said, walking path, there is a bike path by 1610. We're discounting the whole idea of a neighborhood center and it's going to be a massive road. Take a look at that again. How many crosswalks do we have there? Roundabouts, calm traffic. And we have crossing, will I be able to have seniors or anyone take the bike path and have crossing to go to the beach? They can go to, to places to eat. It's an active, it, it should increase active area, even if they're there for a short period of time. That doesn't mean we can't build other housing here. I guess I'm, I'm reiterating what was, was said before, but I'm, 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 can't imagine the people that's, that originally signed this, especially when I used to see them at, at other boards, want to have a large building in a residential area that's going to cost us a quarter of a million dollars more. And if it was going to be 500, half a million dollars more, less than, than, than what, what they expected to be half a million dollars less, then you got to cut a half a million dollars out of this, even more than a half a million, up to 750. So to me, it makes, it makes no sense to put it on Stepping Stone. I think we did our due diligence. I think it was good that we did this property. We looked at this property, had another feasibility study, if only to show what the, the issues were. And, and I can't, I, I cannot expect that we would want to spend another quarter of a million dollars more than the 8 million. I'll end up with this. Everyone has said on Stepping Stone, we want a Council on Aging. And we think it's going to be better at Stepping Stone. We like, or we're going to take the building that you have shown for, for, for 1610, which is around 10,000 some odd square feet. And that's, and we, we like that. And I want to hold people, I hope we're accountable to that because a senior center is a critical need in my mind for this town. Doesn't have to be put on the warrant this, this time around in June. But we're, half of our seniors are, are over, are 60 years old and over. And if you're going to do something at a senior center right now, 1,700 different people use it. And they're going to use, they're going to use it more in the, in the long run if we have a nice facility. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments?
Madam Chair?
I heard two people. I can't tell who it was.
It's Dean, but I'll defer if, I want to offer a motion, but I'll defer if someone else wants to speak first.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to speak. I want to clarify that, that Selectmen Dykes doesn't think that $280,000 is a lot of money. It is a lot of money. So I, my point was thus, and I probably didn't make it too clearly, was that the original petitioners were espousing that this, this facility here in Stepping Stones would be considerably less than the $8 million bucks we were looking at, at 1610. 5.3 plus a couple million bucks, or 1.4 for development cost at Middle Road. There, I think there were about 6.6 million at Middle Road. Well, this is not a 6.6 million dollar project. It's an 8, 8.4 million dollar project. So the savings were not there. And I don't want anybody to think that, that $300,000 isn't a lot to the Selectmen, because it is. It's a ton of money. And I'm waiting to hear Mr. DeCastro's motion. Thank you. And I, I, this is not the place for the senior center. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Dean, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jeff, for that clarification. I do appreciate that. And I will want to point one other thing out that was not mentioned tonight, but it was mentioned the last time Rick presented at six, on 1610. And that was that if Middle Road were to be built back in, would have been built back, I guess Rick made that presentation in January, it would have cost about the same as 1610 would have cost back in January. Madam Chair, on the agenda is a vote or recommendation. I, I do want to just address one point first that Mr. Crimmins made during the public announcement section. These petition articles, while hopefully someone at town meeting will offer a motion to defer substantive consideration to a special town meeting in the fall, they're, they have to be on the warrant by, by law. So they're there. And I do believe it is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to make recommendations to town meeting. And I think we should make a recommendation while this issue is fresh in our minds. So I'm going to offer a motion. I'm going to frame it in the affirmative. I personally intend to vote no on, on the vote. So I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to recommend approval of the Stepping Stones Road petition article to the 2020 annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion from the board. I'm just, I'm going to go, I'm going to poll you. Peter?
Are we voting?
We're not voting. We just caught, and I'm just asking if you have a comment before we vote.
Nothing more. Thank you.
Okay. Jeffrey?
No, I don't have anything more. I'm good. Thank you.
Cory?
No, I mean, we've done our due diligence. We, working, being part of the working group. I've, I've done my absolute best to keep an open mind. I had certain feelings about Stepping Stone going into the working group. And nothing that has come out of that process has swayed me in a different direction. So I, I'm comfortable where we stand right now.
Okay. Dean, did you have any further comment?
Oh, I've spoken.
Okay. I think we've all spoken. I'll put it out to the I'll put it out to the public, but I think that the, we're pretty clear as to our direction. If anybody wants to speak from the public, I'm creating a list again.
Madam Chair, it's Jill.
Yes.
I just want to note that we received no email questions or comments tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Jill. Okay, we're going to take a vote, take a roll call. Peter?
No.
Dean?
No.
Cory?
No.
Jeff?
No.
The chair votes no, so that's opposed, zero, five, zero. Okay, zero to five. All right. All right, and updates. Our next order, thank you, Rick and team, for the presentation. Thank you, the working group, all of you, for your work on, on, on Stepping Stones feasibility. So the next is, we're getting an update on the 1610 Main Street final costs. So I guess it's, Rick, are you doing that, or is Terry or?
I can certainly do that, yes. Thank you, Terry. So the spreadsheet you have in front of you is the three columns of cost estimates and soft cost values that we had presented in March, and then refreshed most recently. And as I described before, during this process for Stepping Stones, we've, we've done a good amount of refinement at Main Street. So what we have in front of you with this time is the, the numbers that reflect the refinements for the site work, the building, building cost, construction numbers have not changed. There are a couple of values down below that change based on percentage, the escalation, contingency, and so on and so forth, but we're looking at a number. I'm going to put my glasses on here. I can't see the screen. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but I think we're at 7, 7,800, no, excuse me, 8.2 million, including the owner's contingency of 5%.
So, Rick, the number is 8,20310. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Question for Jill. Do we take a vote on this? Is this how this works? And is this such number subject to further refinement by the time we get to a town meeting discussion of the substantive matter? Do you want us to take a vote tonight on this to include this, or?
Yes.
We've already placed the article, and we've already voted to recommend approval of the article. But we had, I guess we had left the number blank.
Yes, so the number, it would just be an insertion point, and it's basically for the board's review and for the public for when we post the warrant, that the number has decreased from 8,279,777 down to 8,20310.
Madam Chair, I move that we include the updated cost, final cost estimate for inclusion in the annual town meeting warrant for 1610 Main Street.
Second.
Okay, was that Peter?
Jeff.
No, it wasn't. He beat me, somebody beat me out.
Okay, that was a second by Jeff. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, if that's okay. And has, Rick? You know, I, I was the, the one that talked about rain gardens, and it prompted to look at this, this, how you were going to handle the, the drain water. If you could go to the, the other, the more detailed slide, this 1610, when you, when you now have an apples-to-apples comparison, does 1610 now have a rain garden or a biomass kind of a, of a, a storm system in, or in parts of it? Or can we, if we wanted to, go back to a regular type of system and save some money? Just a question.
This, this, the site estimates, right now, the, the majority of the storm drainage is handled subsurface.
Okay.
There is, there is one surface drainage area in the front of the property that we've included in the design from the beginning, and there may be options to improve upon that down the road, but we've been keeping all of the engineering the same at this point.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was concerned that because I, you know, there was a, a, a major change in what you were doing before, which raised the price, but no, I, I understand.
Yeah. While, Madam Chair, if I may, just as, as you're discussing this motion, I just want to reiterate what I had indicated before, that the number that you have in front of you with this time has an escalation factor that will not, depending upon when the project actually is approved to begin design, is, and when we know that the total funding will be voted for, is when we can give you a more accurate escalation number. So this number could very well, and most likely, will rise.
Madam Chair, it's Dean. I would strike the word "final" from my motion, and hopefully Mr. Dykens, who seconded it, will agree to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, do you concur?
Agreed.
Okay, great. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. I'll, I'll take a roll. Okay. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen Dykens.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you very much. I think that concludes everything. Print out two sheets of an agenda. So I guess I'm looking for a thank you to, again, to the project team and to town manager and her working group, and the staff, and we can move on to vote to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn, I just wanted to ask a point of procedural clarification. We have a meeting this Thursday.
Yes.
At 6 o'clock PM. The public should be aware of that. And I understand that that's going to include consideration of the remaining petition articles. Are the petitioners, are the petitioners going to be advised of that in case they wish to make a presentation? Because my, my understanding is that the board may be called upon to make recommendations to town meeting on that, just as we did on this one this evening.
Jill or Shawna, did, have the petitioners had notification of the meeting yet? And do we know if any are making a presentation?
I have to defer to Shawna.
I believe the board has received presentations on all but two of the petitioned articles, and those petitioners will certainly be made aware of the opportunity to present on Thursday evening.
Okay.
Will that, that apply to even those petitioners who have, are you saying, Shawna, that some have submitted something in writing in lieu of making an oral presentation? Because typically, we allow anybody to sign a petition, have submitted a petition or speaking for it, to, to speak to us when their article comes up.
So for the original date of closing the warrant, there were two petitions, I believe there were two, definitely one, I think it was possibly two, that were submitted after the posting of the agenda for that last meeting to close the warrant. So there was not an opportunity at that time for those two late petitions to present at all.
Right, but they were, I'm sorry. There were several other petitions that were on that meeting, and the petitioners, I believe, were notified, but none, there were a couple on which no one, no one appeared or participated. They were, they, they were, the participation was limited to phone in because that was the last actual physical meeting we had, and only the Selectmen and the staff and consultants were present.
Correct.
And so I just, I don't want anyone to, to, to be slighted in terms of the opportunity to make an oral presentation if they want to. That's all I'm saying, because we expect are going to be taking votes.
Right, and the one petition that was aware of their opportunity at that last meeting but chose not to, I can certainly give them that opportunity again.
Okay, okay. I just, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Okay, Peter's second. I'll take the roll call. Selectmen Dykens.
Aye.
Selectmen Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen Castro.
Aye.
Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Meeting is adjourned at 9:29. Have a good evening, Chatham. Good night, stay safe.